Okay, all right, I hope anybody else joins us, Susan. We'll put them in, but this is a meeting of the Springfield Women's Commission. With myself as chair, Council Walsh, and I'm joined by Commissioner Ellen Morehouse, Commissioner Mariah Mock, Commissioner Gillian Hanksen, and yay, Commissioner Kim Rivera finally got through. She's been getting all the, we had all the wrong addresses for her. She wasn't getting any mail, and we're joined by Bernice Smith and Chanel Ford. So, and let's see, Zuma Lee was able to join us, Commissioner. Great, welcome, everybody. Good to see you. Okay, I think I've got everybody. Did I leave out any of the Commissioners that have joined us? Okay, all right, so the purpose of today's meeting, it's February, and of course, next month is Women's History Month. March 8th is International Women's Day. And I think it's appropriate to start gathering suggestions for an event for March. However, in, in March, as you all know, the World Affairs Council has asked us to co-host, and I'm pretty excited about it, a meeting with 25 elected, thank you Commissioner Stewart for joining us, with 25 elected women from all over the world. I mean, talk about international, and they're going to be here March 21st, which is part of Women's History Month. And I've been giving some thought to the fact that that should really be maybe our event for Women's History Month is this actual meeting with these women from these 25 countries who want to come and talk to women about elections and what they do in their country and what they can learn from us. And already notified City Clerk Gladys O'Leary, and she will be joining us. So to have a meeting with international women during International Women's Month, I think is great. And we will have a reception in City Hall with refreshments and so forth and so on. And I'm always so very proud of our chambers because I think it's beautiful. But I am hoping to get from you today, and starting with the Commissioners, suggestions for what else we might do. Now, unfortunately, on March 8th, International Women's Day, I have a medical procedure, so it can't be March 8th unless you guys do something without me. I'd like to get some ideas from you about what else we might want to do in March. So let's see, I'm going to go by the queue. So Ellen, you are the first one up.
Hi, everyone. Peter, I don't know, I want to, I should go last. I've got longer thoughts. I want to do this event, but I actually have a more overarching goal of like, I think we should sort of restart and, you know, I don't know, but what are our committees? Do we have bylaws? Do we need anything? In many ways, I love this group, and in other ways, I'm like, what is our purpose? Are we a resource connection? I almost feel like we need, you know, like a reset, but I don't want to miss the opportunity of Women's Month. So yes, I'm in for that event. I think that's great. And then I think there's also a longer conversation to be had about our role and what we want to do.
Okay, sounds good to me. Unfortunately, this committee has been plagued by, and at one point, I thought of stepping down because, of course, it has been impacted by my husband's health. And then, of course, he passed away in October. Laura's having fibrillator put into my, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's been a lot going on.
No, but we want to support, and we wanted to thrive, so definitely open to that conversation.
Yeah, so Mariah, did you have your hand up? Or am I making it up?
I don't know if I clicked it or not, but I was going to click it. Um, I, I definitely understand what you're saying, Ellen. And kind of just stemming back to that, like, I feel like we could use this, this like March, this month to like reintroduce ourselves as a committee and like as a resource or as a commission and as a resource for like women, and I feel like a way that we could do that is, I'm always a fan of a resource fair. So not like a fair, but like a resource event, like where we bring together like different aspects of the community, like maybe somebody that specializes in women's like mental health, maybe somebody that specializes in like sexual assault awareness, domestic violence awareness, the WCA. And try and like have just like a day where we like choose a location and advertise like women and families all around to come and learn some resources that are available in the city.
And that's a great suggestion, and the Mental Health Committee did a very similar thing, and they had it on Court Square, and they had a, because the problem with anything at Court Square is parking. And those around the committee know what a great turnout we had for domestic violence awareness and some really outstanding women who, who were part of it. And then for me, that's, that's when my, right after that, my husband died, so yeah, so fell apart for me. But I like that idea. Yeah, how about you, Commissioner Stewart? You must be muted. I think you're muted. Denise, Denise, you're muted on mute.
Okay, here I am.
Okay, good.
Got me, okay. So, good evening Commissioners, and God bless each and every one of you. I'm glad to be back in the fold. And first, my thoughts are, I don't necessarily feel we need a reboot. We just need to do what we're doing tonight to reconvene. We've never not been busy, we've just been a little inactive. So our credibility is still great within our community. And Women's History Month, Women's, International Women's Month has always been the time that we've come out and we shine and we put our stamp on things. So, of course, the flag raising, that's important. And then, of course, I love the idea of our resource fair. And that could be part of what we do. It could be something small or it could be something large. But there are many people who are back in action after COVID and want a place, are seeking a place to come out and talk. We have a Black History Showcase here at Putnam next Thursday. And one of the groups is the WCA. They have a new, a new endeavor that they're out talking about domestic violence, teen dating, domestic violence, and trafficking. We could get behind something like that.
Yeah.
All things that we definitely could do. Of course, Karina's Fair is coming up on International Women's Day. So you know, that's, this is the month in which if people don't know we exist, they learn that we exist. And they never knew that we were inactive. They just know that we'll be active starting in March.
Yes, I've thought about myself that we definitely should support, especially any, any events with any of our Commissioners for Women's History Month. And I'm not sure if Karina's going to be able to join us today to talk about her event, which I believe is March 10th at the, at the Elks, so it's a good location. But I, I think if we are as a commission going to support something, there should be a lot of press and a lot of fanfare about this event's being supported by the Springfield Women's Commission. So we will, we will get to that next. You guys always have such great ideas. Hey, Zuma Lee, what do you think? Good to see.
Hi, how are you?
I'm okay.
Can you reiterate the questions for me again, please?
Well, just that March is looming. March is international. Now, March is Women's History Month. March 8th is International Women's Day. And the Women's Commission always does some, we used to do it with schoolchildren, but that kind of fell by the wayside. We always do some kind of event. The number one event is, is the, is the event that we are co-hosting with the World Affairs Council for 25 elected women from around the world who will be in the City Council Chambers, March 21st for a reception and to talk about election and women who are elected and are in commissions. So that's a, I think that's
And when we talk about co-hosting, what does that look like? Does that mean that we like hold their space, have them like feeding them? Do we have like, you know, people inviting folks to come in to have, you know, conversations? We have to like put the agenda together? Is that what co-hosting looks like, or is this?
Not, not for this, because we were approached by Sid Melcher from the World Affairs Council, who asked us if we would do this event for her, with her. And it's already booked for the City Council Chambers from 9:30 to 11:00 on Tuesday, March 21st. And it's really going to be a discussion and interaction with these, these women from all over the world. And yes, there will be refreshments, but I haven't, I haven't done anything.
No, no, I was just wondering if there, what was our role in?
Our role is to show up, interact, and meet these women and speak to them. And I'm sure we'll hear something interesting from them, as they will hear from us. They're very interested in knowing what goes on with other women.
I'm curious to also know if we can have, can come up with a series of questions to ask them around, like if they have Women's Commissions in their areas and how they interact with their political position to see if we can get like a better understanding of how different people interact with their Women's Commission. Yeah, that, and then yeah, I think that'll give us like a bigger, better understanding of like what our role can be in the city. Because personally, I'm not really like into the resources, although those are, those are good. I'm really more into like pushing into like policies for like systemic changes and, and structural changes. And so when it comes to resources, that's not in my self-interest. So, you know, I would really also kind of piggybacking a little bit of what Ellen said around really defining like what our roles are and like, you know, do we have, like, what does it look like to be a board and under the City Council around like board chairs? You know, how are we like sustaining this, this commission, right? And what does it look like to bring other people in? But also like prioritize some of the issues that we never got back around to. And also that if one of us, something happens to one of us, God forbid, right? That, that the, the commission is sustaining itself. It, it has a structure that it can continue to be viable. So I just want to throw that out there because that's one of, that's my main concern right now. As far as Women's International, about something that we can do, I'm, I'm not really sure. I'm not the biggest fan, like I can do advocacy work, I can do servicing work. But for me, I'm really like really about taking a deep dive about some of the systemic problems that are happening in my communities and what can be presented to the City Council to really like heal our communities, you know, as a woman.
Well, of course, the Women's Commission is now a standing committee of the Springfield City Council. And just to reassure you, it lasts almost a year ago. You were all sworn in as Commissioners for a four-year term. So the City Council would make, the City Council President, if there were vacancies, would make any appointments or changes to the board.
Right, no, no, I mean, like, like, I mean, like, we still want participation from our communities, right? So what is that engagement? I feel like I, I can speak for my sector of the community, but I also want people from my communities to step up and participate as well. So in the event, let's say that I can't fulfill my obligations, God forbid, right? That's not what I'm implying here. What I'm saying is that if there is like someone that I can bring up that leadership pipeline, I'm always going to do that. Right? And so I just like, how are we like building that relationship with our community so that we can really get to know the rooted causes of some of these women's issues? And also be able to like figure out how we're either going to change them or even who we are, if that's something that we're going to do. You know, for me personally, I would want to know what our role is so that I know in what direction I go.
I think that's why you're with us. Gillian, how about you? Oh, Gillian, you're on mute too. There you go.
Um, I mean, I kind of aligned with Ellen and yeah, just with, I know we started and we have our monthly meetings, but there is no, I guess maybe what we need is an education and or is there somewhere you can guide us that we know what the commission is and what we're charged to do? And go from, and go from there. Whatever we do for Women's History Month, I'm there to support it. You know, whatever it is. We didn't have the opportunity to plan anything for ourselves, so it's good that we can align and partner with other people. But I really think that we need to be a stronger force for the city.
Okay. And I think the last Commissioner that's on the call is Kim. Kim, you're on mute, but I see your hand up. So you gotta unmute yourself.
Well, first of all, I just want to say I'm excited to be here and to see all of you and all your beautiful pictures that you have up of yourselves. I do agree with everyone. I, it's great to be able to have something in writing so that we could always go back to and remind ourselves what are we doing and why we're doing it. I definitely would like to see some kind of cultural event, if it's possible. If we could do it in different areas of the city, or if we can get some other people to connect with us. And, you know, I could see some banga there, some beautiful African dresses and dances, you know. I don't know what Italian people do, but you know, different, a little bit of everybody and, you know, put on by the Women's Commission, and because we're such a diverse group, we were beautiful up there. You know, all in our own ethically worn outfits, so we got to make sure we do that. And, you know, present the, I, I think that would be great. And other, and other, and I would also agree with, with Zuma regarding trying to create some new leaders or open doors for some new leaders to start setting that up that, you know, like you said, I didn't realize we were here for four years. I'm okay with it, but that's, that's great because that gives us four years to get a couple of young women to be right behind us, take our place or continue on the side with us so they can learn, you know, not only about politics, but even myself, learn more about our culture, learn about more opportunities, the do's, the don'ts, and relationships, you know, all kinds of stuff. So if we keep them around us enough, which gives us about another two years, I think that we would get some good homegrown leaders.
I think that's a good idea. You know, who knows in four years? I don't want to tell you how old I'll be in four years, but definitely we got to be looking down the road for people. So is there another member of the Commission that is on Zoom with us that I have not seen? Okay, then we have two, two, I believe we have two guests, and one is, I think, Bernice, you, you spoke to the council, and I believe you spoke to the Women's Commission before.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, so why don't you reintroduce yourself?
Okay, I'm Bernice Smith, and I, I basically met you guys back in June, and it was regarding domestic violence. Since then, I've worked on some projects on domestic violence, and I'm hoping that the Women's Commission will be a full force in pushing some policies and some, some improvements through, some projects through. As far as the Women's International Day or the, the World Affairs, the first thing that came to my mind was food. But another concern is, is this going to be inside or outside because March is a cold month? So, I mean, I was thinking food, but different foods from, from like different cultures, different nationalities. That'd be nice for an intro. But I, if possible, I'd like to send you all a video. I sent it to, I sent it to Commissioner, Ms. Walsh, but I'd like to send it to, to the rest of the group regarding domestic violence. It's a couple of projects I've been working on, and I think they'll be helpful to get the message out about domestic violence.
Yeah, well, the event for the 21st is in the Council Chambers, so it is in the works.
Okay.
Okay, I think if you can send that to the council staff, the video, they can then forward it on to the members of the, of the Commission. So, yeah, I can give you that, that address. And we are also joined, joined by Chanel Ford. Hi, Chanel.
Hello, everyone. I do apologize, I'm in transit now, but I am just really grateful to be able to share space with you all today, and thank you for allowing me to be able to be part of this. So I am currently one of Mayor Sanos' aides in his office and just really still taking it all in. I'm still fairly new to the role. So just again, really grateful to be able to be in this space with you all and, you know, just learn with you and from you as well. And hopefully I will be able to contribute, you know, to this group and just really looking forward to, you know, celebrating, you know, in March. And again, still, you know, learning and navigating within my respective role. But I know how you mentioned, you know, with Martin's and being, you know, International Women's Day and a flag raising. You know, and just I've had a little bit of experience with that so far. So if there's any way that I can help coordinate on that end, I am more than happy, you know, to do that, as well as assisting with, you know, proclamation, citation, you know, those kind of things. And just any other, you know, forms of support that I can offer. You know, both professionally within, you know, this role of being a mayor aide, but then also just, you know, as a woman and honestly, as a lactation consultant as well. So I wear, you know, multiple hats in that way. And just any way that I can, you know, just be able to contribute, you know, to this very rich group as I can see as it is. So again, just grateful, and just any way that I can support, please let me know.
Well, yes, welcome, and I have not met you yet in City Hall. The mayor is always very supportive, whatever the commission does. And he was, he was at our flag raising in, in October. So I think we need to obviously brainstorm about, with the members of the Commission about what, what the role is and what it is we would like to do besides the meeting with the international women. So I, and I think that there's tremendous support. As Denise said, for any event we do, we always get very good media support so that the community out there knows there is a Springfield Women's Commission. And, and I, I don't blame you for wanting to have more of an identity, you know. And there's only, let me see, I think Denise, you're a holdover from our former commission. That was a standing committee, the difference is a subcommittee, this is a standing committee, so it has more, more stature. And Karina, but I don't think there's any other holdout, any other members ever on it before. So, and we always did something, something, March, March was always, March is a busy month with St. Patrick and the international women, so busy month. All right, so what suggestions would you make for the Commission to create that identity that you're looking for? And I'll throw that open. Denise, I see your hand up, and again, you're muted.
Okay, so one thought I have is that traditionally, May was always set aside for voca and the homicide support groups and different things. And we do something in Court Square with the Y. I would love to, to kind of investigate targeting Commissioner Moore and talking with Bernice and, you know, on a subcommittee to see if we can at least start a discussion, and anybody else who would want to be a part of it. I tend to like smaller versus larger in the beginning. But to see if perhaps we could put a stamp on something that would would reintroduce the importance and also honor those people who have lost their lives to domestic violence. And, you know, we, we had the tree at one point in time where we, the tags are still probably on it. They're faded, 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 but you know, perhaps to come up with something that would be would be our stamp on getting involvement from the community and, and really bringing light to that. You know, there, there are a lot of things happening in Springfield, and violence is rampant. But our women are being targeted and are sometimes silently suffering. And our teenagers need to understand the importance of dating and dating violence and who you're getting connected with and all those type things. So I, I don't know where it goes, but I'd just like to, to consider it. And May, of course, is Mother's Day, so you know, around there, again, it would have focus on women.
Okay, Kim, I see your hand up, and you are also muted. So you have to unmute yourself.
I was trying to text, I was going with the flow. I just wanted to mention something that doesn't have nothing to do what we're talking about. But the law, just wanted to mention real quick because I work for State Red Bud Williams. If there's, if there's any laws that anybody wants to take, this is the time to reach out to your state officials to get it done. So if there's something personally that you think that is very important, please, if I, yeah, I mean, if you need my email, I can give you my, I'll write in the text, email me now because from what I'm told that we have, we're able to put our opinions in on what they should support. So they're going to listen to us. So please, if there's anything out there, you know, let me know by this week.
This week is a deadline?
No, I'm just telling you this week because I don't know the deadline, so if I can get it sooner, the better. You know, if you're passionate about it, I'm sure you, you have the bill numbers and stuff like that. If not, you know. Thank you.
Right, I don't want to keep going down a rabbit hole. And, and the thing is that I understand that the, all these issues are super important, right? Like I, I completely get it, and I don't want to be dismissive toward them. But I almost feel like if it's being dismissed, that if we don't decide who we are as a board, then it's going to be really hard for us to be impactful for all these, all these important issues. And I, and I don't want to like make any one less than the other, but without knowing our power or what it is that we do as a commission, and I feel like we need to start there. Without us understanding that, then it's very hard to be effective. And so we, we have these suggestions, so maybe even if that's like the facilitation in these meetings, we have space to introduce some of the stuff that we're working on, then when we can give that, we can give that space, let's do it. But there's also needs to be time for us to dissect who we are, right? Because I remember voting and remember prioritizing some important things for us. And for me, I don't feel like it's, I don't feel, feel good, right? When Beatrice came the first time to speak about domestic violence was here to my heart, me not having the ability for her in, without understanding what it is our role is. So I, I don't want to like keep introducing into this commission without being able to really without being able to really understand what our capacity is. So I just want to throw that out there that those, those are my feelings that are coming up. Because I want to be again, super effective. And I don't know if we can be, we don't know what it is that we do as a board.
I remember we voted on our, you know, sort of very early on, or at least through the survey had, you know, key buckets of work that we were either A, ourselves professionally or personally vested in. And I think from that, maybe we can sort of come to some, you know, here are our top five buckets. And if it falls within this, you know, leadership will assist on a myriad, you know, whatever our scale is. Event, resource, support, you know, what have you. I think for me, the question comes down to money. When we begin to formulate these things, you know, can we, i- is there access to budget through the city council? And Caterie, forgive me for this because this might be a personal feeling on my part. Is there anything from the beginning? Because when you said sign for a four-year term, I didn't actually know that. So I'm like, okay, is there a, like a one pager? Is there a handbook that I should have read?
No, that's just the way Marcus Williams actually was the council president at the time, who created the standing committee. And this shows how things changed. Because Marcus Williams is no longer the council president.
So I looked it up. I just put it in the chat. I see all of the city council subcommittee assignments listed out. I see the women's committee, but there's sort of no other resources. So I wonder if it's maybe incumbent upon me or, you know, the committee as a whole. Maybe we get some sort of definition on the terms and roles. And then that will help us decide those, those sort of buckets of, of work. Because everything we've mentioned here tonight is worthy, right? We should be active in March. Should be active in May, especially in October and more.
Yeah, absolutely. But that just goes to show you how, how much things changed, you know. And, and hopefully, who's ever council president will keep the committee going.
Alan's running for mayor now.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's getting to be a very crowded field for mayor, so.
Excuse me, I just want to know, why aren't we, why, why isn't the women's commission active every month?
We are.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's what we want to like, make sure that we're structuring ourselves in that way, right? And that's why I mentioned that before.
That I would say.
So I think we're a new committee. Essentially, there was a women's, cater, correct me on my history. There wasn't women's commission for many years. It essentially was disbanded, much in the way like my own personal project is the youth commission. The city of Springfield has like forty boards and commissions with no one sitting on them. Zoning, appeals, you know, and kind of these wonky pieces of government. Because there's no quorum. And so I think for my part, I'm glad to be here to sort of flesh out these ranks. Because I think it's very important to have a designated women's commission. But I think Caterie has really led the, the effort to resurrect us. I think there was not a women's commission for many years. And so I appreciate the renewed focus on it. And it just, between the winter and the pandemic, if I'm being very honest, it's a new group of women who have come together for the first time to figure out what we want to do. And so between the holiday season, here we are, you know, essentially trying to figure out ourselves as a body and then go forward and be impactful. Because I think all of us, you know, love the work, love the community, but I'm not in it for the resume, right? Like I want to be a resource. I want to work with the DA. I want to find out, you know, whether it's policy or short, short-term money, or even just community events. Like I think there's a huge role for all of us that, you know, so-and-so showed up to the school fair from the women's commission, right? That, that's powerful. That says something. That's how we build it. So I think we're just kind of internally trying to figure out our role, how we work together. Is there a chair? Is there a social media committee? You know, do I need to be making this a Facebook page? How are we amplifying each other and all of this great work? Because there's almost so many things to do that we ourselves should pick a bucket of work. I'm just making this up, three, five topics that, and we're like, okay, we prioritize domestic violence, financial literacy for youth, you know, whatever our categories are. And then those are the things that we are in concurrence with, you know, go forth, do the community events, that kind of a thing. So I, I think it's, yes, we are active, but in many ways, we're trying to put the par before the horse. And so if we can sort of back up and say, what are we doing here? How can I help? What's my role? You let me know.
And if that means, if that means us receiving a little bit of education around like root causes, right? And how, in trying to change some kind of structural, whatever it may be, and I'm not trying to brush it off. But then I, I honestly, in my heart, believe that we can start in that journey of healing our communities, right? Like, like, for instance, you know, like if people value families and there's not insufficient job opportunities. Me, I would like to go into like economic development, right? Because I know that the possibility of like job opportunities for our youth and our, our men, right? And, and our women, right? The equity in there, that, that, that does a big, has a huge impact in how people live their lives. So if, if it takes for us to like learn a little bit about how these structures are designed and they work, so we can understand the impact, maybe that will help us determine, you know, where, where we're most effective at.
Have, have they thought about doing like, as far as women's commission, have they thought about doing like a team up? Like two who are interested in, send by two by two, maybe, two who are interested in, like Denise, she's interested in domestic violence and she can grab me along. And another, another, maybe another two focus on financial, another focus on other, other relations going on in the city. Have they thought about, have you thought about doing that?
I think that's a great idea. I think that's exactly what we were all just hoping. Caterie, do you happen to have that survey data from long, I mean, from the? Could you recirculate that? And I think, you know, it might be helpful for us to even get a contact list going. You know, if I want to send an email to Mariah or something like that, I would love to know. You know, connect on social media with all of us and then, you know, plug in more with each other, share these original ideas. And then from that survey data, we can identify those buckets again and be in agreement. And then whether it's two by two or subcommittees, you know, however we form it, I think we're all pretty much in agreement on the things that matter to us here tonight.
Sure. And Ellen, I would think too, I don't want to overstep, but we definitely need a social media of some kind. That would be helpful first off, but I also want to go way, way back and state that each one of us should know why we're here on this committee. We should know why we were asked to be here. And of course, we each know what our strengths are in the community. And we also know what we're interested in, which is why we shared that information. And so recirculating it would be great, but I definitely never want to say I don't know why I'm here. Because I, I know exactly why I'm here. And I would think that we would all, you know, at this point, know why we're here.
Well, I, I like, you know, I'm gonna dig it out and relook at what people's priorities are. But I know that domestic violence was one of the top, the top concerns for everybody on the committee. And for preferences and.
Maybe it becomes a, a goal for us to participate or host, you know, one event quarterly, a resource fair a year, you know, outside of our monthly meetings. You know, setting some goals for ourselves, both internally to hold ourselves accountable and externally to make sure we're, you know, reaching the community, reaching the folks that we should be. I don't, I don't know what those are. I'm definitely Denise, happy to help with social media. You know me, any way I can help. But like that, like I didn't know if we could, as a city council subcommittee, does that require permission beyond me? You know, so there's sort of like almost levels. I'm, I'm just. Means to be a city council subcommittee.
Yeah, I think there was, I think there was a very vague mission statement when everybody was sworn in.
We should flush that out, give ourselves a mission statement. Then some goals that we maybe vote on to participate in these events. Because we, these events are so important. And I, you know, doing them one off every month doesn't feel as impactful as like, okay, and here's our plan.
Yeah, well, that's traditionally most, we're following the tradition of other city council.
We're gonna change every council. They haven't had an agenda nigh on twenty years catering. We're gonna change the little flow of work.
Well, that's funny, so.
Talk to me about hyperlinks, Mayor Sanos.
The task will be to reintroduce ourselves and reintroduce ourselves with a statement and.
I love that. I think that's a great idea. We can do the meeting, maybe do a statement, flag raising for International Women's Day. All of those things are great.
Well, I think we, we, we definitely, because we have the flag now, we definitely can do the domestic violence flag raising. Or else that we have the flag. So, Mariah, you looked like you wanted to say something. When is your event? It's.
What was that?
When's the event for Kate?
The celebrate Kate. That is always the Sunday after Mother's Day, so that's May.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's, it would be good for us to have a list of things the commission commissioners are doing so we can support them. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of reiterate like everything that everyone has said. Like, these are all one thousand percent things that I think we do need to focus on. Like especially creating that structure and making sure that each of us knows what their personal goal of being here is. And like, whether that be like what they came in wanting to do or what, like we figure out as a group that, like, like you guys said, like this is your job, like you're doing social media, like this is your committee. You're gonna be working on domestic violence, you're working on financial literacy. So like, starting with that structure, but also like not overthinking what we're doing. Because at the heart of it, like we're an advocacy organization. And making sure that we are just doing like what we can to support, like, what's going on in the city and to like make people aware that we are advocates and are, are resource for advocating for change. Like, starting with something like a resource fair can be a really good kind of entrance into that. Because we're not only bringing different aspects of the community together to like give those resources to people here. But we're also like there as ourselves and can be taking comments, be taking questions, be introducing ourselves to the community, not for the first time, but like personally. And like having mental health resources, sexual services, domestic violence, trafficking. And like just ourselves all in one room can be like a good introduction to what we're trying to get done after our little break. I just think that like, starting with one thing and then making sure we're structuring ourselves to keep it going is really important.
I, I don't disagree with anything that we've, that I've heard today. It's all very encouraging. And I do think the city council office should have a listing of everybody that's on the, on the committee. Because of course you all get an email. Yeah, so that, that's easy to circulate that information. That's easy to circulate that. So does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? I see some. Gillian, your hand is pink. I don't know what that means.
My hand is up.
Pink for women.
What I wanted to suggest is maybe after Women's History Month, we do say like a retreat, whether it's for a couple hours, two, three hours, that we can pin down exactly who we are, what we're gonna do, flush out a calendar so we're not scrambling when these months come up and not know where we are. So if we, say in April or the ending of March, we get together for two, three hours outside of these one-hour meetings, then we can really pinpoint what we're gonna do for the rest of the year, for the calendar year. And this could pop, and it could end up being what we need to do for the next three years. So we know we have specific things that we're focusing on, the specific months that it's gonna be. And we're all there to rally it along, promote it, X, Y, and Z. This is the Women's Commission. This is what we do. This is who we are. And this is what we stand behind and champion. And then while we're out there in the community doing what we do, we can get feedback. And like you said just now, you know, be personal, not just, you know, we're there to take information or we're there to give information. Find out more about what the community needs while we're out there with this in the first year, doing what we need to do.
And how would a retreat, I think it's a wonderful idea, how would it work? You've been on them, I would imagine.
Yeah, I'm thinking, so, so far we've done, we've tried to do a couple of things in person. And I think what we're missing here with the gelling is that we're not in person. We're online, trying to make it work. And all we're doing is playing catch-up instead of being ahead of the game. With the retreat, if we find a community space or we have a space that be, you know, maybe started from maybe eleven to three. Or, you know, just a few hours and have some breakfast or lunch or whatever. And just sit down and have a plan, almost like a, what do you call those things? Like a project, like a project scope. So we know where we want to be in a year and a half, two years, and just plan that all the way backwards to where we are today. So we know every step of the way, what we're gonna do for the next two and a half years, three years.
It's a great, that's a great idea. And, and it would be a task, there goes my voice, a task for those of us on the committee to come up with a space. Because I think that is a good idea. Because, and plus, not all the members of the commission are always together. We get a forum, but we don't always get the majority. So I mean, to have everybody together. And if we give them notice, I like the idea of doing that in March. Like, that's a great activity for the, for International Women's Day and History Month. If I didn't have a procedure, talking about scope, I think it's gonna be something with a scope on March eight. That would have been a good day, but I like that idea very much. How many, how many of the commissioners like that idea? Just a, a show of hands, I can. Yeah, looks like a majority of people really like that idea. So, yeah, I like that. Let's, let's work on that. Get everybody together and get our. Meanwhile, I will recirculate the surveys and the priorities and, and the contact list. Let me write that down, priorities.
Hey, I wanted to mention that I have an Easter hunt coming up, April eighth, the Magazine Park, which is the day before Easter. I know this is a long shot, but the booths are free if anybody's interested. I just asked for a raffle gift, but if we have the opportunity, maybe even next year, not this year. But if we can get equipment like that, so when we do have opportunities to be at events, that would be great. Because this, you know, this would be a good event, dead smack in the city. And, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention, during the retreat with Gillian's great idea, I was thinking one of the activities we could do is maybe a vision board for the committee.
That is a wonderful idea. Is the retreat, is there a retreat master? Or is that taskful to the committee? Or is it usually done by somebody that does these retreats?
I think just picking a time and coming up with a brief agenda.
In this retreat, I'd also like to solidify, like, is it possible for us to have, you know, various facilitators and co-facilitators? Because we're, we're all coming from different spaces, different like educational backgrounds, different ways that we go about like, you know, speaking about some of the issues. One, right, we, I, solidifying like co-facilitators and facilitators throughout the year, rotating ones. And also like really defining how we run our meetings, so that there is space um for, like, when Kim was just um speaking about different community activities that are happening, that we do get space for everyone to say, hey, this is going on in the community, whoever's interested, please come. Um that way there'll be, you know, time for us to the, conduct the business, but in a more structured way.
Yeah, those are wonderful ideas.
I think that's great.
Yeah, I see some more. Kim, you're, you already spoke, your hand is up.
Sorry.
Yeah, did, did you want to say anything else, Kim?
No, thank you.
Okay.
And Kim definitely circulate details of that April event, you know?
I will, I'm, I'm gonna do that, because I have all that information, yeah. Um I do not see any other hands up. Does anyone else have any concerns they'd like to raise? Uh Gillian, do you want to take on the responsibility of finding us a retreat space?
Sure. Are we talking about um April, or what month do we want to do this?
Yeah, April and May. And, you know.
Uh I'm just looking now. I mean, I think, I think, you know, we're doing something, I would like, rather do it the last week in March, because I'm, I'm gonna be away if April, from April fifth on. Yeah, is it possible, do you think, to put, put something together for the third, fourth, third or the beginning of April or the end of March? You think we have enough time to do that?
I will do my best.
Okay.
I'll work on it and get back to you guys.
That'd be good, that'd be good. Okay, alrighty. Well, that sounds good to me, so I, I think we're gonna be, got some positive steps for moving forward. Did anyone else want to make any comments?
I just wanted to put it out there, as far as domestic violence and, and Kim being, you know, speaking about the laws. Um and be, this is the time to reach out. I learned that there's only a hundred and forty-eight beds in Massachusetts available for those who need uh to get away from a, a destructive situation. So I just wanted to put it out there, and that's something that we could, that, that'll be something that'll be great for the women's commission to work on as well. Increasing the beds for, for people who are trying to get out of a tough situation.
Absolutely.
And that's the ultimate.
Karina has just joined us. Karina, how are you doing? Karina?
I don't see your catering.
Oh, I got, you know why? I didn't admit her. There we go. Are you with us, Karina?
I think that's a very important piece of information, and that's ultimately, for me, the policy that we then change, so.
Oh, oh, there she is, perfect. Hey, Karina. Yes, I remember now that you're here. Thanks for joining us, we're talking about um structuring our women's commission, but I know you have an event and I'd like you to share that with the members of the commission, hopefully they will support it uh with you. Okay?
All right, sounds like a plan. Um so Saturday, March fourth.
March fourth, I'm sorry, I told him it was the tenth, okay?
It's okay. Saturday, March fourth, from one through five PM in the afternoon, we have our International Women's Day celebration at the Elks Lodge in Springfield on Tiffany Street. And um what it is, is we do it every year, it's a celebration of different women, um talent, performances, guest speaking. And um I hope um you guys get to attend. And I was even thinking, if somebody wanted like a table or to represent even the women's commission that day, we would make that um possible, so, you know, just.
And, and I believe you also have a, uh if I remember correctly, you have a speaking program, correct? So if there is something going on that the women's commission wanted to promote, or is this something that someone on the women's commission wanted to address, that'd be a great forum. Because how many people do you usually get to attend?
Absolutely, it would be a great day to announce that.
Yeah, um what's your attendance?
Um hundred plus.
Yeah, so it's, it's well supported.
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm glad you're switching to the Elks, I think that's uh easier to get to.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to the big banquet hall, you know.
Last year I drove, I've been down Memorial Avenue for about an hour before I could find where you were.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so this is at least visibly easier to get to with lots, lots of parking and stuff like.
Absolutely, yes.
So are you, are you doing a, you're doing a flyer?
Am I doing it?
A flyer.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes, when the, the flyer is ready, I will actually just send it to you and we can share it, absolutely.
Well, I want you to put on it, that's your event to support it by the Springfield Women's Commission.
Got it.
Yeah, include that in the uh, in the flyer and, you know, maybe.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I've got a five-thirty, so I'm gonna drop, but I look forward to getting more of these details.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks for joining us, yeah. Is it almost five-thirty? Oh my goodness.
Yes.
I'm looking at the wrong clock, okay. Well, then, we will um reconvene, I will get this information out to you, and we will look forward to a um retreat in the near future to get everything together and formulate a plan uh to move forward with the commission. So I want to thank everybody for joining us today. Karina, you just made it.
I literally just made it back from work. I know, my day is full.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good. But it was, it was definitely an important, very important part of the meeting.
Thank you.
How long you have been doing that event?
This is gonna be our eleventh celebration, yes. Last year was our big ten, right?
Yeah, 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 you've done a great job, it's grown every year.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, everybody, I'll be sending all that information to you. I hope you all have my email if you wanted to add anything uh to what we discussed today. So thank you, and thank you to our guests, Bernice and Chanel, who we will let you know what's going on also. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks.
Thank you.